The hour of seven o'clock having arrived, I'm going to call the council to order. Let the roll reflect that all council members are present and a quorum has been established. Tonight, we have a few presentations to begin with, and I'm going to turn it over to Julie, our Assistant Administrator. All right, let's go turn it over to Melanie, and then she's going to turn it over to Julie. We're going to talk about some new employees that are coming on board here at the City of Hastings. Melanie?
Thank you, Your Honor and council, and members of the public. We have the opportunity to welcome a number of new employees here tonight. Rather than me doing the introductions, I'm going to turn it over to the department head to introduce each of their respective employees. So we will have Julie start.
I will introduce Diane. I am honored to introduce Diane Archer. She joined us about a month ago. She is our new senior accountant. She has her bachelor's degree in accounting and her master's degree in public administration. She has 20 years' experience in government accounting. She was also served as the finance director for Inver Grove Heights and Cottage Grove, and most recently, the city of Casa Grande in Arizona. And she misses Minnesota, misses the winters, misses the snow. So she is back with us, and we are thrilled to have her onboard. Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Diane, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. I just want to say that it's an honor to be able to serve this community, and I'm looking forward to meeting all of you and moving forward. Thank you.
Welcome. We're very glad to have you onboard. Thank you very much. Next, Chris.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor and council and guests here tonight. Chris Jenkins of the Hastings Parks and Recreation Department, here to introduce Brady Endress. He's our new parks keeper at the Parks and Recreation Department. This is a new position, so we've added an employee in our park maintenance side of things. We're super excited to have Brady. He is a Vermillion kid, born and raised, and so he didn't stray too far from home. He also has his horticultural degree from DCTC, so stayed around pretty local. Spent the last three years with Rivertown Tree Service, putting that horticultural degree to work. So one of the things that we deal with very, very often is trees here in Hastings, and so we're looking forward to putting Brady to work here. He's been with us now for almost a full week.
Okay, well, good. I hope it's been a productive week, Brady.
It has.
Do you have anything to say?
I look forward to representing the community, and I'm very honored to have the opportunity to work for you guys. Appreciate it.
Well, we're glad to have you onboard. And believe me, you will be busy. I know that our park keepers, we've got about five of them down there, and I don't know how you do it, Chris, you and your cool crew down there, and Cory Likes and everyone, and they do such a great job. And we really appreciate you coming onboard, because we really do need your help.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. They do all the work, not me.
Okay.
And then we've got Chief Schaefer coming up for our police reservist and our police officer, new police officer.
When the chief is done with his presentation, council, I'll ask that we'll meet in front here and have a photograph taken with the new officer.
Thank you, Mayor Hicks, council member, city staff. Tonight, once again, I have the honor of introducing you to Hastings' newest police officer and police reservist for the administration of the oath. These individuals have gone through a rigorous process to get to this point, and it's not taken lightly. After tonight, they will step out into our community and serve a multitude of functions that, in whole, promote peace and safety in our community. Knowing that they represent our future gives me a sense of pride and confidence as they collectively take us to the next level in professional policing and volunteerism. At this time, I would like to present to you our newest police officer, Jordan Sitka, for the administration of the oath of office. Jordan Sitka is a Stillwater native. He graduated from Stillwater High School in 2011, completed his bachelor's degree in law enforcement from Mankato State in 2015. He stated in his application, "The two greatest motivators for me becoming a police officer is that it allows me the opportunity to help change people's lives, make a difference in a community, as well as the diversity that the job requires, with not a single day being similar to any other day." So I think that pretty much sums it up. So with that, I'll let Julie administer the oath. Do solemnly affirm That I will support the Constitution That I will support the Constitution Of the United States of America Of the United States of America The Constitution of the State The Constitution of the State Of Minnesota Of Minnesota And the ordinances of the City of Hastings And the ordinances of the City of Hastings And that I will faithfully discharge And that I will faithfully discharge The duties of a police officer The duties of a police officer Of the City of Hastings Of the City of Hastings Companies of Dakota and Washington Companies of Dakota and Washington County And state of Minnesota And state of Minnesota According to the best of my judgment and ability On my honor I will never betray my badge My integrity My character Or the public trust I will always have the courage To hold myself and others Accountable for our actions I will always uphold The Constitution My community And the agency I serve One of the most well-known symbols of policing is the badge. This badge is a symbol of trust and authority it conveys, comes from and belongs to the people of Hastings. With its issuance, we pray that they will serve a long, safe, and successful career. Tonight's badge will be pinned on Officer Sitka by his father, Larry Sitka.
We're going to come up for a picture, and I'm going to ask Diane and Brady to join us as well.
One at a time, I'll briefly introduce them. It'll be followed by an oath of the group, and then a quick presentation of the badges. So with that, first, I want to invite Eric Geske forward. Eric grew up in Chan-Hassan, Minnesota, graduated from Chan-Hassan High School in 2007. Was a Boy Scout, member of the Carver County Police Explorer Post. He attended Alexandria Technical College for Law Enforcement around the same time he joined the Army National Guard. When he graduated from Alex Tech in May of 2010 with a two-year degree, he was deployed to Iraq and Kuwait, where his duties involved missions in convoy security. Next, I'd like to introduce Riley Tarrant. Riley grew up in Hastings, graduate of the Hastings High School. He attended Inver Grove Community College for Criminal Justice. Has transferred his credits to Metro State for his four-year degree. He started working for his family business at the House of Coats in 2007, and is currently working there. He hopes to have the opportunity to someday apply and work for the Hastings Police Department. Next is John Tracy. John Tracy currently lives in Prescott with his wife Helen Louise Tracy. Jonathan has been in the Air Force Reserve since his enlistment in 2009. He's considering returning to school and changing his major to law enforcement. This is something he has stated he's been looking into, and recently learned that he's just a few credits short of completing his associate's degree through the Air Force Community College. Brooke Winter. Brooke's lived in Hastings all of her life. She stated in her application regarding her interests in the Hastings Police Reserves, "I want to donate my time to my community, also want to be a police officer, and would like the experience." Brooke graduated from Hastings High School and is presently a student at Inver Hills Community College in Inver Grove Heights. Her major area of study is law enforcement. Jackie Jong. Jackie's lived in St. Paul and Maplewood his entire life. He graduated from North High School in St. Paul. He obtained a two-year degree in criminal justice at Century College. He still needs to complete his skills, which is scheduled for July of 2016. Last but not least is Sang Yang. Sang currently lives in St. Paul. Sang graduated from Harding High School in 2009 and started attending Century College shortly afterward. Sang is also a member of the St. Paul Police, was also a member of the St. Paul Police Explorers for two years. Sang intended on obtaining an associate's degree in law enforcement, but then decided to take a break from school. Started working in security and enlisted in the Army National Guard. He's been in the National Guard for three years and 10 months. Currently is in the Infantry Division and said the waiting list was extensive for military police, so he's considering other options. Sang returned to Century College, and he's again looking into his associate's degree in law enforcement. So I present to you the six newest members of the Hastings Police Reserves, and Julie, if you'd like to administer the oath.
(applause) I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and the ordinances of the City of Hastings, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of a police officer of the City of Hastings, companies of Dakota and Washington, State of Minnesota, according to the letter of my judgment. On my honor I will never betray my badge My integrity My character Or the public trust I will always have the courage To hold myself And others accountable For our actions I will always uphold the Constitution My community And the agency I serve
Okay. Are we going to have the badges presented then? And then after that, we're going to, you know, there's such a fine-looking group of people, I think we're going to have our picture taken with them as well. Okay? Before we do, I just want to thank the reserves. You know, they're doing this as a volunteer to their community, and it's a large responsibility, and we really appreciate the time and effort and the training that you all have here in Hastings. I want to thank also the numerous members of our department who are here, Hastings Police Department. I think it just shows us what a close-knit group of people they are, how they support each other, because, you know what? Your jobs aren't easy, reservist and full-time staff. You know, being a police officer is not an easy job, and I really respect it, and our community in this council really respects what you do and how hard it is. And thank you for your service to everyone, and great to see you here tonight. I see the chaplain of the department is here. Reverend, did you want to say a word?
Mayor Hicks, I'm just going to have him do a real brief prayer to bless our new employees. And before we take the picture, very good. Thank you.
Well, we want to pray for you, because the job that you have is so important. Blessed are the peacemakers, our Lord Jesus told us. And I just pray today, that Lord, you keep your hand on each and every one, the Lord God, in fulfilling their duties, that you will keep them safe, that you keep their families safe, and we thank you, Lord, that they've answered this call to come and stand in the gap to protect and to serve our community. In Jesus' name, amen.
Okay, let's go for a photo. And then... Maybe you may recall that earlier, or probably late last year, the Aviation Support Battalion that was in Hastings at the National Guard Armory, we have new, a new company that's here. It's the 434th Chemical Company, and we are blessed today to have Captain David Browns here. Okay? And First Sergeant? Okay, maybe you can make that introduction. Captain, welcome.
Thank you.
I just want to tell you how much we value the National Guard and the units that have served here. You know, we have a lot of pride in Hastings. We have a long military history here, from the very first volunteers of the First Minnesota Regiment. Some of them were, many of them were Hastings citizens. And so we have a long tradition in Hastings of honoring those who served here, and I just wanted, on behalf of the city council and city of Hastings, to welcome you and your unit to Hastings. And maybe you can introduce the sergeant, and please say a few words, and then I'll introduce Dean for a few announcements.
Oh, thank you.
And, okay.
Thank you, Mayor Hicks, council members, citizens. It is truly an honor to serve in the City of Hastings as a representative of the Minnesota National Guard. The 434th Chemical Company, we have two missions essentially that we serve. One is a green mission in which we support Army operations in terms of decontamination, protecting our troops in the event that there's any kind of chemical or biological or radiological attack. Also, we have a white mission, which is dedicated to the state of Minnesota and the region. If there's any issues to that nature in the area, we would be mobilized in a civil support capacity for decontamination to protect our citizens. And I can tell you from firsthand experience that it has been a very, very warm welcome since we have occupied the Armory and since I've been the commander of the 434th Chemical Company. In fact, as I've been out in the community, the citizens of Hastings have been incredibly nice, welcoming, generous, offering to buy meals and shake my hand, and really gracious and grateful for the work we do. And so it has been a wonderful time being here. I'm looking forward to serving and representing our company and the National Guard in your city, partnering with your members to make things happen and to serve in our capacities. I'd like to offer a few words for my First Sergeant, First Sergeant Katie Blackwell, who serves so tremendously in that role in leadership at our company. So First Sergeant Blackwell.
Mayor, city council members, Chief Schaefer, it's good to be back. Chief Schaefer was my boss in Minneapolis, so you had, you picked a good chief. So we miss him, and I'd take him back any day. But it's wonderful to be here, and like the commander said, everybody's been so welcoming, and you have a beautiful city, and we're really excited about working with you. So, nice to meet you.
Thank you, Captain. Thank you for your service. Thank you, First Sergeant. Appreciate your service. Thank you very much. Now, I'll just turn it over to Lou, who has some announcements coming up with Beyond the Yellow Ribbon and other things. Please, thank you.
Mr. Mayor and city council members, I have two quick announcements, reference the Hastings Beyond the Yellow Ribbon program. The first is Governor Dayton proclaimed April 2016 as the month of the military child. Children of service members and veterans deal with many issues unique to their situation. It is estimated that over 15,000 children in Minnesota have been affected by a parent's deployment or absence. During the month of April, the state of Minnesota takes a time to recognize the month of the military child in order to emphasize the important role children play while a parent or important adult is away serving. Governor Mark Dayton will be sending children of military members and veterans a letter of gratitude in honor of their service and sacrifice. And of note, we'd like to make a special thanks, or extend a special thanks to Rick Wheeler, Justin Hahn, Kim Huff, Kristy Baum of Hastings Independent School District 200 for their mentorship and role to our community's youth and members of the Military Support Group. A special celebration will be held in May, sponsored by Lyle Russell Veterans of Foreign Wars Post and 1210 and Nelson Lucky American Legion Post 47, and the Hastings Military Veterans Services Beyond the Yellow Ribbon. More information on this event and the month of the military child can be found on the Hastings Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Facebook page. Secondly, the Hastings Beyond the Yellow Ribbon will be hosting a community table talk at the Tilden Community Center on April 14th at 6:30 PM. The topic will be financial readiness. This event will be pre-seated by a social at 6:00 PM, so come early and get a good seat. And we're expecting this to be a very informed event, so everyone is invited. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Appreciate those announcements. Okay, council, we're going next to our agenda. The approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on March 21st, 2016. Any additions or corrections to the minutes of that meeting? Seeing none, they stand approved. Council items to be considered? Are there any council items to be considered? Okay? Seeing none, we'll go to consent agenda. Council, what's your wish? Councilmember Schultz makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Councilmember Nelson. That motion is not before the body. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have on the agenda the award of contract for the Riverfront Renaissance Phase Three improvements. Nick, welcome to the meeting. Very glad to have you here.
Thanks, Mayor Hicks. Good evening, council members. For the council's consideration tonight, we have a resolution awarding the contract for Phase Three of the Riverfront Renaissance project. We have a projector problem. So pay no attention to those guys. See if I can hold it together while I watch this. Anyhow, we received three bids for this project a couple weeks ago, and the lowest of which was from Pember Companies in the amount of about $2.9 million. Now, this amount is about 27% higher than what our estimates had indicated, and that's just another reflection of the very competitive and volatile construction market that we've seen the last couple of years. It's been very difficult to predict construction cost and anticipate the pricing that we'll get. That said, we see that the lowest two bids were very close, in fact, within a half a percent of each other, so we know that the contractors are accurately reflecting things. We also do have a very challenging and complex project in a highly sensitive area in regards to traffic flow and maintaining access and getting the job done with numerous constraints of that nature. So in essence, we do tend to pay a premium for those sorts of projects, and that's also reflected here. We've done a reference check, as we always do, on major contracts. Pember Companies, I think, is a name that most of you are familiar with. We have had them in town on projects at least a half dozen times over the decade-plus that I've been here, so we have a pretty thorough working knowledge with their company and feel that they are capable and up to the challenge and the work at hand. Something I also wanted to note is that although we have higher-than-expected bids on this, we are going into this with the spirit in mind that we'll be working on a variety of what we call value engineering items. We saw several things within the bid that, the prices for particular things that were shockingly high, and we need to get to the root of what that is and see if there's maybe a different way of still achieving those goals for those items. So we'll be working on those in earnest with Pember to hopefully save a few dollars from that overall price tag. So I think that about sums it up. I'll turn it back to you, Mayor Hicks, and I can stand for questions.
Okay. All right, council, this is before us, so open that up for discussion, council. Councilmember Longi.
Thank you, Your Honor. Nick, thank you for organizing, as usual, a good competitive process, and like staff, I imagine, I'm disappointed at the high bids and know that we were able to get less work done as a result. One of the things that I think is particularly upsetting is that we can't get the alleyway project. Could you go in detail about what it is, the pieces of that, and then if there are other substantial portions of the Riverfront Renaissance Phase Three that aren't going to be getting done as a result of this? Can you walk through that with us?
Yeah, great catch, Councilmember Longi. I apologize for not covering that. We made the decision at, as we were coming down the homestretch of developing the final scope of work for everything in the area, and we realized that the alley has, it's taken on a life of its own in terms of complexity and what we're trying to achieve there with burying overhead utilities and the various coordination efforts that go along with that, and decided that it was best left on its own track. Not that it couldn't be integrated with everything else we were doing, but everything else that we had on the streets in Oliver's Grove and such were ready to go. They were ready to get out the door. We didn't want to jeopardize our project timeline or a decent window in time to bid the project, so we made the decision to push that out, leave the alley as its own separate thing. Now, what we were coming to with that was seeing prices and estimated costs that are going to push us beyond the boundaries of what our budget was for Phase Three. And what that means is we need to take a step back and look at that and how we might be able to still get that project done, but either through acquiring external funding of some sort, programming it for 2017, and perhaps even some other alternative solutions. So we've extracted that and kept it to the side. Doesn't mean we're taking our foot off the gas and pursuing it and getting it done. It just will come at a little bit later time and maybe be delivered in a different way financially.
Sure. Thanks for your efforts to keep us within budget. I appreciate that, Nick, and know that you almost always do such a wonderful job of that. And on those very few occasions where it's not possible, it's usually a factor well outside of anybody's reasonable control. So thank you so much for that. I'm not, you know, going to suggest a motion of this effect or anything, but I am just curious, because most people might look at this and say, okay, so the lowest bid's 25% above. What is the reasoning for not, I imagine timing has something to do with it, was the reason for not saying, oops, okay, all the bids are too high? You know? oops, okay, all the bids are too high, you know? On the Price is Right, you know, everybody would be out, and they'd redo, they'd redo the thing. They'd pick four more people. And they, they do it around, and I get that we're not a game show here, but I'm, I'm kind of curious as to why we would not just resubmit the bids so that we could maybe push people closer to that and kind of push back a little bit on the market.
Yeah. I think to do so, Councilmember Alaji, would probably jeopardize our timeline for getting that project done in 2016. We're nearing the end of the window, as they say, for the, the most heated time for contractors in bidding projects now, such that their schedules are going to be quite full after we get through the next week or two here, and, and we would risk an even higher price, perhaps less interest, and that would, of course, push us to delay further.
Okay. That's all I, other than to state my enthusiasm for that, for the utility, for, you know, fixing up the utilities and on the alleyway, Your Honor, I, I definitely support staff's movement toward that in whatever way they feel is most legitimate, as long as we stay within budget.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz?
Um, Nick, so we've, we've made a request of the state legislature for one and a half million. We'll probably know something May 22nd. Would that be, if we, if we received some funding, would that be beneficial for us to finish the utility, the utility work?
I think it would, Councilmember Schultz, yes. But with that uncertainty there, we were not in a position as staff to, to weigh in on what we would recommend just yet. It's kind of a hypothetical still. Yes.
Nick, just a quick question. You know, we're, we're, we're still committed to the, the electrical work, as Councilmember Alaji alluded to, but, you know, looking at some of the cost factors, are there any grants or, or that nature that we could apply for to help the cost of that?
That's going to be a strong focus as we head into the future, Mayor Hicks. We're not aware of anything that's out there that's real obvious for this type of construction. It's not unlike a local street reconstruction where essentially the bulk of the funds is all locally sourced. So, we do need to explore that and, and search for whether there's some opportunities out there to help with this.
Yeah. I understand there might be some grants and stuff like that, so I'm hoping that if we're successful in that endeavor, that some of the costs of this project might help reduce some costs down the road when we're doing another project, all coming from the same pie, so to speak. Okay? Is there any further discussion? A motion is required? Councilmember Alaji makes a motion to approve. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. That motion is now before the body. Is there any further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we go to Public Works. There's a resolution before us tonight to approve the plans, order improvements, and authorize advertisement for bids to 2016 Neighborhood Infrastructure Improvement Program. Ryan, glad to have you back.
Glad to be back. Okay. Yes, as the mayor stated here tonight, this item is the 2016 Neighborhood Infrastructure Improvements, the consideration of ordering of the improvements. So, just to kind of refresh our memories, the project area is Bailey Street from 10th Street to 4th Street, also including 4th and 5th Street between Tyler and Bailey, and the four alleyways that are along Bailey Street from 7th Street to, to 4th Street. Just a little background, we were here at the March 21st City Council meeting discussing this project. The project goals were discussed in detail, and a public hearing was conducted at that meeting. We furthered or moved the decision on council action, ordering of the improvements to tonight's meeting, as the full council is in attendance for the vote tonight. So, a little follow-up, there were some questions from council and from the public hearing that we wanted to recap on and, and discuss a little bit further with the council. Of that, one of the largest concerns was paving of the gravel alley. So, we wanted to step back and talk a little bit about the origin of the proposal, how, how the paving of the gravel alley got into the project in the first place, and some of the benefits that, that we find as, as staff going into it. The, basically, the city has on the books received several internal and external, external inquiries in recent years of, hey, what are we going to do with our, our alleyways? What, what are we, we have several of them. I'll show a map in, in the next slide. But what are we going to do with them, and, and let's, let's take this under discussion. So, what, what staff did is explored the most efficient ways to address our alleys and some of the problems we, we see on maintaining them and, and upkeep of alleyways. What came out of that is to add the alley improvements, paving of alleys during our normal annual street maintenance, our street improvement process. So, essentially trying to get at that economies of scale, get the most effective pricing for these alleys as we move throughout the community and, and schedule larger street improvement projects. So, moving into some of the benefits that staff then followed up and saw in, in researching these, these alleyways, where, was, number one there was really the reduction of, of maintenance efforts and the specialization of maintenance effort. As you'll see here, here's a map of all our alleys in the city. The red are, are those alleys that are gravel, and that's a little over half of our alleys, or 1.6 miles is, is gravel alley. So, it is, it is a, a pretty significant item to consider in our, in our street network. The reduction of maintenance efforts, one of the, one of the things that we do from a public works perspective is dedicate labor and equipment about two to three times per year, per alley. So, that's about, that's about two weeks of staff time, or, or crew time that is filling potholes, filling ruts, and shaping the road to make it accessible and passable. There's also an average of about $1,000 to $2,000, depending on price of gravel, that we spend specifically to import gravel and, and place them on, on these alleyways throughout the community. So, one thing, if, if we continue to pave the gravel alleys and, and remove that maintenance from the system, our crews can, can dedicate that time on more efficient pavement management techniques and, and not have this specialized, unique area of, of maintenance efforts. So, that's, that's one thing we took into consideration. Also, we also looked at the, what, dealing with erosion and sediment runoff from these gravel alleys, we, we see that fines and sediments run off these gravel alleys and get into our downstream waters. So, we looked at this specific project and paving of the four alleys that, that we have, what would that do in our reduction in sediment loading? And we found that for this specific project, we could eliminate 400 pounds per year of sediment by dealing with the sediment erosion at its source, by paving the alleys. So, this, this is a requirement, that the, the city does have a stormwater permit with the MPCA or the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. So, we take credit when we do these project improvements or environmental improvements in our overall permit cycle. So, just a couple other items, again, focusing on paving of the gravel alleys, we, we do see that if we define an edge and pave our alleyways, we can limit the encroachment in those alleyways and, you know, predominantly allow for safer passage through all of our, our alleyways. With the pavement of, of alleyways and installation of curb and gutters, we have the opportunity to improve the drainage of these alleyways as well. What we do is we take significant shots before we, we propose our design, and we look at the best fit that we can do on, on paper. And when we take that out in the field, we, we stake those improvements, or those, how we can match into the existing conditions. And we work with the, the private properties that, that abut the, the drainage improvements, and we fix those drainage areas that we can at the time with, within, within the confines of, of our, of our improvements. So, one thing to keep in mind is when we are able to put a paved surface, a crowned road, and curb and gutter, we can send that runoff downstream into our storm sewer system where it can be treated and maintained through that system, rather than that water either pooling or setting there or spilling off partly into the private property along, along it. So, we, we find those as, as opportunities to improve the drainage. Then also, a couple straightforward items, we find that minimization of icing and increased safety over the winter months occur as well. We're able, with a hard surface, to more effectively and efficiently plow these alleyways. There are times, like our last snowfall event, when the gravels, the gravel surfaces become so soft and wet that we have trouble even of the thought of sending a plow through there. So, we, we like to have that hard surface to come through and, and be able to address snow events throughout the year, or throughout the winter months. And then also, the, the cleanup, we, we have heard comments on, on some past alleyway projects we've done. It gives the, the alleyway a cleaned up appearance and aesthetics to, to basically fix the, the drainage that we have and, and provide that hard surface that comes with it. So, we've taken that into account as well. Just a couple other items. We, we did further look at the parking, just to kind of confirm that along Bailey Street, we, we have the, the parking safely addressed. And we feel that because of a couple of points that we, we've done so with the staff recommendation, the current practice from 8th to 10th Street is, is to allow parking on the east side. So, it's kind of a, a status quo, if you will. And then also, if you, if you count up the number of driveway spaces along the east side, we have quite a significantly less amount of driveway, which allows significantly more parking space available on the east side of that corridor. But like we stated at our, our last presentation, that, that's a separate resolution that will come if the, if the project moves forward. And then lastly, we, we did want to comment on some analysis we did on looking at the trips that were, were generated from changing Bailey from a one-way, or from a two-way to a one-way. This adds about 250 to 300 trips per day over to Tyler Street, the northbound one-way. And predominantly, we, we see these as short trips that from 10th Street would, would take an east-west street of 8th Street, 7th Street, and 6th Street predominantly to get back to their neighborhood on Bailey Street. So, that kind of reinforces our analysis that Bailey Street is primarily serving the locals that front it. And then looking at Tyler Street a little bit further, our, we take counts every two years on, on our collector-type roadways, and, and with two lanes heading both in the northbound direction, we feel that through our analysis that Tyler Street really has the capacity to, to handle many times that added trip volume. So, we did look into that study a little bit further. So, with that, that's all we have for tonight. Stand for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate it. Council, this issue is before us. There are some people here from the neighborhood who are here. We did have the public hearing at the last meeting, and I remember seeing you here. However, I'm going to allow a little bit of time here if anybody else would like to make further comments. Please, please come to the podium for the record. Thank you for being here, and if you give us your name and address. If you give us your name and address, please, we appreciate it.
Deb Buckingham. I live at 411 Tyler, and I apologize for not being at the last meeting at West Spring Break. I spent it with my family. So, my question is about his comment about Tyler handling all the traffic. Okay, now, we're looking at the River Sound Renaissance. Now, we're going to add this huge artist loft. You're going to add parking for people going to work. I'm, I'm assuming that he talked about, you know, a bus going from here to St. Paul. So, you're going to have public parking downtown. You now have the artist thing, and now you're going to eliminate a two-way street on Bailey and make Tyler your main runaround. You have one stop sign on 10th Street. You have one on 4th Street. It's a racetrack, and you've got a school in the middle. So, my question is, is it really logical to make Bailey a one-way when you are expecting even so much more traffic, and it's a neighborhood with a school in it?
Okay.
That would be my question. And then the second question is, that I have, is my alley is paved. So, you're going to rip that sucker right up after you just put it down and repave it? But, I mean, that's something completely different. But my, my main concern is making Bailey that one-way and Tyler the main access that you have going down to downtown when you plan on adding so much more downtown. And you have, like I said, a school. You've got one-stop sign. Yeah, you got two lanes that can handle the traffic, but let's think about what's between there. A residence, a school, and a crap-ton of traffic? I, I just don't see the purpose. You've already cut Bailey back at 4th Street when it used to go down to 3rd. You've doubled that traffic on 4th Street, and now you're just going to make it a one-way going the other way. You know, access to downtown is already limited, and they will use Tyler. They're going to say, ooh, this is really quick because there's no stop signs. So, that's my concern.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else? Welcome to the meeting.
Well, thank you. Terry Kennedy, Larry's 14 East 6th Street. Mine is one of the alleys that they're talking about paving, and I'm listening to the reasoning behind it, and I really don't get it. They're talking about the maintenance on these alleys. What was the figures that you said about how much time it takes per alley? I can't remember what you, was it like a week or?
Two weeks.
Two weeks staff time. I can't remember ever seeing anybody out in my alley doing anything. Maybe the plow's been through there a couple times this year, but, you know. I just guess I, I just have to say, I'm questioning the validity of, of some of the facts that I, I'm hearing there that they're presenting to us. So, that's all I have to say.
Duly noted. Okay. Okay. Sir?
My name's John Steele on 5th and Bailey. I wasn't able to make the last few meetings. I also have a complaint on the alleys because they went through three years ago, and they blacktopped the end of all the alleys. The erosion has stopped. There was erosion prior to that, but the erosion has stopped. I have a piece of property along that alley. It's all Class 5. Am I going to have to repave all of that once they do the, do the alley?
Okay. Thank you.
I'm also, I'd also like to, I haven't seen any yet, but I would like to see a plan of dimensions and what we're talking about. Is there anything available?
Yes, the staff will show you the plans. Yep.
Okay.
They've been available a while, so.
Yeah, with the dimensions and everything?
Uh, yes.
There was something, one that came out said they were going to make Bailey 20 feet. Well, by my house, it's 25 feet now.
Right.
You know, so, and then they're telling us they're going to take more property away.
We have it. Yes, we have the, the dimensions.
You have the dimensions?
Yeah.
And they are 20 feet for the road? The road is going to be 20 feet? So, you're going to widen my yard, or you're going to give it to the railroad?
I didn't buy it and stop, and we can.
Okay.
In detail.
All right. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. Welcome to the meeting. Glad to have you here.
My name's Jim Fox. I live at 615 Tyler Street, and I also do have a alley that is tarred. And I was wondering what's going to happen to that, and it does have a cement curb. I was wondering what you meant by a hard curb, if that just means a piece of tar raised up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Roll over.
Because mine has already been professionally done. So, if we could speak later, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, if there's no further comments, okay? Okay, if there's no further comments, okay? Welcome to the meeting.
Rick Harrington, 521 Tyler Street. I was here at the last meeting. Just, my question is, I believe it's Ryan. Have you been out to my particular part of the alley? Have you looked at anything as far as drainage goes? We talked about, you're talking about Crown Alley as opposed to a Conca Valley. Have you had a chance to look at any of those properties at all? Have you done any assessments on them? Have you given any thought to what we talked about?
Yes, we have worked out in detail and we're shifting and doing what we can to address the drainage.
Okay.
Keep it consistent.
Sure. Yep. 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 Because I'm just really concerned about that, you know, as far as constituent and paying for it. And it was commented that the alleys were going to be at the same level. And definitely, if anybody wants to drive down my alley, you can tell it's tipped to the north, and, you know, so everybody's in the north again. So, you know, I'm not opposed to the alleys being paved. I just want to make sure that everybody knows that, you know, we've got to have some right drainage there and.
We've got water there. Right.
A lot of people on our alley, there are contractors, and they kind of know what's going on. And even my yard sits lower than the alley right now. So, any drainage is going to have to seriously be addressed, and that's my concern. And so, again, like what Terry said in the comments of two to three times a year, they come through the alley, cost them $1,000 for gravel. My alley ain't been touched in 20 years. Nobody's put no gravel down in my road, ever, 20 years. So, I'd just be a de facto, so.
I think they were talking about the whole city, not just that. But, okay. Duly noted. Thank you for your testimony.
I got one.
Okay. Okay. There's no further comment, then we'll have the direction come back to counsel. Counsel, this issue is now before us. What's your wish? Councilmember Alonji.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to start off by thanking both those community members that have reached out to me over the last several weeks, as well as staff, for advancing the conversation here. We've got an overall, a good project, the repaving of the street. Bailey Street needs the work. It's going to get the work. A lot of the aspects of the project look really, really nice, and I'm looking forward to seeing it move forward in some form tonight. I do have some questions and comments that may address that specific form. I want, as I said, staff have done a very nice job here, and I just want to share some good details. This was a good, an example of some excellent response from staff that I just wanted to share, Your Honor, to the council and also to the community. I can't read the whole thing, this is a little bit long, but, you know, I had had some questions regarding the cost of gravel and things like that. And I just want to recognize Nick and Ryan for their efforts to educate me on the topic. You know, we do have, we do have some mild savings that I do see here as a result of maintaining a paved alleyway as opposed to a dirt or gravel alleyway. I do have a question that does stem from, and it's already started to come up, and it's regarding the maintenance of gravel alleyways. And in my house, it's a little difficult. I'm on 5th and Ramsey myself, and it's a little difficult for me to tell when a maintenance truck goes by. I mean, I hear the trash trucks, but I don't ever hear everything that goes down there. And it's, and my house is situated, so you don't actually see what kind of comes down that alleyway. Is there a, is there a record of how much maintenance this area has gotten in terms of alleyway maintenance? I mean, is there a way? I'm sure you don't do ward-by-ward analyses of the cost, but is there any way for us to get a sense of whether there has been a lot of maintenance work done in the alleyways in this area? I mean, has that been a continuing concern that we're trying to fix? I just want to make sure that if we provide a solution, that we're solving a problem.
Yeah, I'll take that one, Councilmember Alonji.
Thanks.
We don't have an alley-by-alley record, as it were, as to what activities are done on each one. When we talked with our Public Works Operations side about that question last week, what they were sharing with us is that on a system-wide basis, we're committing about two weeks' worth of effort to address alleys and patching them up. It doesn't mean that each and every single alley will necessarily have to have something done to it every year. Or that the intensity of the activity there would be identical from place to place. We have varying terrain all over town, varying conditions, varying drainage. And so, there will be some that don't have quite as intense of effort placed on them as others. And it may only be a throw-and-go type of scenario where some potholes exist, and there's some brief shovelfuls of gravel thrown into those potholes. They're shaped off, and we're set versus a heavily eroding area where we're going to need to put more of an effort into shaping that surface and use more material, more effort, more equipment, et cetera. So, pinpointing exactly what has happened over the years and then year-by-year, alley-by-alley record-keeping, we don't have something to that level of detail. It's been more of a, this is our annual practice and time commitment, effort commitment that we have, doing all of them as a whole.
Fair enough. And I gather you don't leave a calling card about, hey, congratulations, your gravel alleyway's just been redone by the City of Hastings, you know? Okay. That's fine. The next question I've got, and Nick, you may decide you want to handle this as well, is I do want to echo the question that came up in regards to, I know you wanted to look at things on a case-by-case basis, but are the alleyways that just came up this evening, a couple of which are paved or have pavement in them, are those alleyways part of the project? I would like to get a sense of, like, I thought every alleyway we were touching was gravel. Are we touching already paved alleyways in this project?
There is one case where the alley is covered with blacktop over several different iterations of blacktop placement. It does not have a controlled, consistent grade or the curb and gutter that we're talking about.
Lumpy pavement of sort?
In upgrading that cross-section, like we have in nearby neighborhoods.
Okay.
So, we would create that situation here.
So, if somebody's already just paved for their situation, I know they'll get an answer specifically by staff, but what I'm hearing generally, as a council member that's got to vote tonight, is if somebody has just recently paved, just recently gotten their alleyway paved as part of the more, a previous project, those alleyways are not being revisited so quickly just a couple short years later. That's not what we're talking about here.
We do have a situation where there is an alley with blacktop on it. This was not done as part of a project, per se. It was done through separate, different maintenance efforts. This is a reconstruct of that surface to apply the new standard to it.
Tyler Street traffic, and I'm on, a reminder, I'm on Ramsey, so I understand it going the other way. And especially with Bailey now, you know, kicking over on 4th, Ramsey and Tyler are essentially one street in terms of the north and south traffic. So, whatever we do downtown, I certainly do understand how it impacts traffic. We get, you know, cars parked up close to us on the car shows, and we, I've thought about what our space would do as I make, as I cast my votes here to both the surrounding neighborhood and myself personally and others across the city. And I do think on occasion, you know, one of the benefits that we have in, on Ramsey Street that I'm not sure I see on Tyler, is that we do have a stop sign that kicks in on 6th that's right in front of the school. And it stops the traffic that, I mean, I can hear them, they come off, they come up 4th, and I can hear them coming out my window, and they're gunning pretty hard, and then they see the stop sign, and they've got to stop. So, they stop. Bless them, most of them, if they're going the right way. So, that's one thing that I do notice, is that that stop sign is a meaningful stop sign. And that is a stop sign, the one stop sign we've got between 4th and 10th. Have staff considered one stop sign somewhere between 10th and where the next one is there on 5th, is it? I think it's 4th.
4th Street.
You get to go all the way to 4th without stopping? Yep. That's right. I get to turn on 5th without stopping. Yes. I'm going to go down that way.
Answer to the questions, no. We can look at it. We would run it through what the standard process is for considering stop signs, which is a pretty thorough vetting of the conditions there, the traffic volumes coming on each of the legs of the intersection. And we do have to meet what are called warrants in order to justify stop signs before we.
We have to meet those, excuse my interruption, Your Honor. And Nick, we have to meet those from city ordinance. We have to meet those because of some state statute. Help me with why we have to, what we have to do.
It's an application of the, I'm going to get a little bit jargony here, but.
Go for it.
The uniform on traffic control devices. Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, MUTCD, that the state has adopted and which is the standard for any regulatory and warning-type signage that's placed on roadways.
And it's a standard of guidance or a standard of requirement?
It covers both. And when you get into regulatory signs such as stop signs, it's a required type of language that they use.
So, the state would stop us from putting up a stop sign if we were to vote tonight? And I'm saying that I'm going to make a motion, Your Honor. But if we were to make a motion tonight to amend this project so to include a stop sign on 6th, and the state, say, Department of Transportation, were to come in and determine that we didn't do it properly, they would prevent us from doing that?
I'm not entirely certain of what type of enforcement the state might do to step in. The process is meant to produce uniform standards from city to city.
Sure.
Place to place on traffic signage so that the traveling public, who is going to all of these different places, has a reasonable expectation that the signage that's in place means the same thing.
Right.
Is there for the same purpose.
Right.
And when we get into things such as stop signs, I think, I may have said this before at other project public hearings, but they're not to be used as speed control devices. They can quite often have the opposite effect and cause people to rush in between the intersections and speed even more. So, or roll the stop signs and violate them. So.
In the past, you've done an excellent job of explaining the science of it. And I agree with you, I would say about 95% of the time, and not just, the 5% isn't just in my word. You know, in terms of the, in terms of the placement of stop signs, some of the science is counterintuitive. And I think it's helpful to talk through it briefly, of course, Your Honor. I think it's helpful to talk through it a little bit so that folks understand why we may or may not do things. I will point out that I'm not, I wouldn't be asking, if I were to ask this, I wouldn't be asking for us to do anything that isn't already being applied on the Ramsey side already going the other way. In other words, I don't think the community would have an unfair expectation that we would add a stop sign where we already have a stop sign going the other way. If Ramsey and Tyler were one street, essentially what we've got is a stop sign going one way and not the other at that location. Just pointing it out for now, but I, but I, reserving the right to bring it up later. For now, for the sake of avoiding the mayor's hot glare, I'm going to move on. Could you, could you, could you discuss briefly the impact, if we were, if we were to not have these alley, thank you. Nice service. If we were to have the alleys not in this project, hypothetical, what would be the financial impact to the project as a whole? What would happen? If we were to say, gosh, you know, these alleyways, it seems like a lot of people don't like them. We don't want the alleyways in there, Nick. Just do the project without the alleyways. What happens to the project in terms of the finances of it, financing of it, assessments, things like that? Just give us a general picture, please.
Well, in going through the computations that we have for that, of course, we derive some assessment revenue from properties that abut the alleys for the share that they would pay towards the overall construction project. What we do know from that analysis is removing that, that frontage that would be assessed does put us in a little more dire straits financially to meet the minimum requirements that we have to, to assess a certain percentage of what we would then borrow, bond for, issue bonds for. It's not to say that it would be impossible, because, of course, we need to see bids come in and get a sense of what actual prices are. But estimating and our projections would give us some sense that that would make it awfully difficult.
Okay. My last question for now, Your Honor, and obviously, since this is a order, I just want to reserve the right to pick up questions. I know other people probably going to want to ask questions and say things. So, thank you for your patience with me. So, my last question.
Take all the time you need.
Oh, bless you.
There's no glare over here.
Bless you. And you're not glaring at me. For those that don't know, I sometimes tease the mayor, but he's very generous with time here for me. So, thank you. For the 400 pounds of sediment annually that we're talking about, it was a stat that you just used up here, Ryan, that 400-pound unit of sediment that we're hoping to leave, you know, in nature, closer to home, where does that go now? What waterways, you don't have to break it down by pound, but what one or two or three general locations is that sediment washing into right now? I think I know the answer, but I just wanted to ask for the sake of clarity.
Yeah, there are only two there, one of which is Lake Isabel. Part of that drainage is directed there, the other part being the Mississippi River.
And so, the Lake Isabel sediment there probably contributes to some of what have, not all, because a lot of that's Mississippi flooding, you know, and backwash and everything from Mississippi Vermillion and everything. But that probably contributes to some of what makes Lake Isabel the way that it is.
Yes.
Which is a lovely lake that has some sediment problems. Okay. That's all for now. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Counsel, further discussion. Councilmember Vaughn.
I just had one quick question for staff. Have we, have we always, or have we ever looked at not maintaining alleys? Do we always plow them? Or do we have any that are association-based where the residents maintain those alleys? I know other cities do that. I'm just curious, do we own and maintain all of our alleys then, according to that map in the city?
Those are the ones that we care for, and you saw they're pretty well isolated to the oldest parts of town here. I don't know if there are similar-type roadways in newer developments. If that were the case, there's a likelihood that there is some private maintenance on them. To answer the earlier question about whether we've looked into abandoning them, for instance, and letting the adjacent homeowners take care of it, I haven't been part of a discussion of that nature. It may have happened prior to my time here, but it hasn't come up in some time, if ever.
Just to confirm, do we plow them on every, whenever we plow all the streets, do all the alleys get hit at the same time?
We'll run through the alleys too. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Balsanik.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to support what Councilmember Alonji said about a stop sign. I'm not an expert on the standards, the guidelines, and the specifications, but there is wiggle room, and I'm sure we can find some wiggle room in there without bringing the wrath of the state or MINDOT down on us. So, whatever we can do to add a stop sign over there on Tyler, I would really support something like that. I think the fact that we've got the school in the immediate proximity of the stop sign that we're talking about, and again, if you look at Ramsey and Tyler, it's like Councilmember Alonji said, it's really one street. And you've got two streets, but you've got, you know, the traffic going in two directions. And it just seems kind of logical that if you have a stop sign on the one side, it would make sense to put one on the other side then, too, on that. I do end up traveling both of those streets quite a bit when I'm going from downtown for my business out to Bellwood Oaks Golf Course. It's a lot easier heading up that way to the stoplight at 15th than catching all the traffic through the midtown area. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion? Is there a motion? Councilmember Alonji?
Thank you, Your Honor. Now, I just want to make sure my comments and motion, I think, there was some. Okay. They're thoughtful, but my very powerful call was there. So, where I'm left with this, and I'm going to make a motion to amend.
Okay, let's get the main motion before us, and then I'll take motions for amendments. Okay? Okay. Councilmember Balsanik makes motion, and seconded by Councilmember Brox. Councilmember Alonji, to your amendment.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, I'd like to amend the current motion, which I understand is for staff recommendation on the project, to do two things. First, I'm, I will admit that I'm not entirely convinced that the paving of the alleyways is necessary. I'm cognizant of the financial benefits of doing so to the city and to the neighborhood. I do believe it is probably financially good for the neighborhood in the long run, but I also believe that part of our job up here, and specifically my job, I'll just speak to myself, is to represent the folks in that neighborhood and the ward. And absent a compelling philosophical, ethical reason to lead them elsewhere, I'd like to try to just simply represent the overwhelming sense that I've heard from the neighborhood that the alleyways could remain gravel. that the alleyways could remain gravel and be fine. So that's gonna be part of my amendment is to remove the alleyways, and if we want specifics, I'll need to see a map up there so I can get specific about it, but my intention is simply just to remove the alleyways in the project. The second part of my amendment is going to be to put a stop sign. I believe we have the authority... I'm not an employee of MINDOT, but I am a state employee, and I know the limits of state power, and I would be stunned if the Minnesota Department of Transportation were to come in here and tell us that we could not put a stop sign at the corner of Tyler and Seventh, which would be, which would stop the traffic right at the corner before you hit the school there. And that this be done as part of the project and, or at least congruent with the project. I believe that it is related to the project, it's appropriate to talk about it, even though a stop sign won't be on Bailey Street, and I'd like to see that be part of the project as well. So I humbly offer those two adjustments as an amendment to the motion on the floor.
Okay, the Longi amendment is no paving of the alleyways as part of this project, and Part II, a stop sign at Seventh and Tyler. Okay, to that amendment, counsel. I will just say, first of all, I'm not necessarily opposed to a stop sign.
I believe I need a second.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Not that I wanna argue against myself, but I have to get a second before it goes anywhere.
I just wanted to get into discussion.
Thank you.
I'm so anxious. Is there a second to that amendment? Second to that amendment? Okay, if not, it dies to a lack of a second. Okay, now we're back to the main motion. Discussion to the main motion. Any further discussion to the main motion? Okay, counsel, I will caution you that to have the project go forward, this requires six out of seven votes. Okay, we're gonna do a roll call. So we need six out of seven votes, I'm gonna request a roll call be taken. Clerk will take the roll.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilmember Longi?
Yes.
Councilmember Balsanik?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Brox?
Yes.
Mayor Hicks?
Yes. There being seven ayes and no nays, the motion does prevail. Just as a side note, councilmember, I think the issue of a stop sign is a good discussion to have, and I think we ought to pursue that anyway. We can pursue that independent of the project, and maybe what I'll do is ask staff to study that issue, traffic warrant counts, and come back to us with some information on that, because I think a stop sign there is a good discussion to have. Councilmember?
With your permission, Your Honor, I would like it to be an agenda item regardless of staff recommendation. I wanna, I would like a discussion on it.
So noted.
Thank you.
And it will be.
Give it some time.
Give it some time, yeah. Will be in the future.
Gotcha, absolutely.
Okay. Counsel, we'll go on to the next item of business. We have before us tonight a community development under that agenda, Hastings Art Space Lofts Project at Second and Tyler Street. Mr. Hinsman, welcome to the meeting. I hardly recognize you with that beard.
I hardly recognize myself sometimes. What's that?
It must have been a heck of a vacation.
Yeah, it must still be going on, huh?
Spring break, huh?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers. Excuse me. Tonight we have before us a few items related to the Art Space project, which is a redevelopment of one acre of property located on the northeast corner of Second Street and Tyler Street. What we collectively know here is Block One. What's before you tonight here in the listing are the actions necessary for council approval tonight. I'll go through these individually and go through an overview prior to that, but we're looking at preliminary and final plan approval for a subdivision, a couple of special use permits, site plan and variance for the site. Looking at background and actions for the site itself, this is something that's been before us as the owner of the property for some time. You may be aware that we've owned this property from about 1979 to the early 2000s, acquiring various pieces of what we collectively call Block One here. This was a contaminated site, a site full of oil tanks, a tannery, and an abandoned, burned-out ski factory at one point where the parking lot was. This is a site that required our assistance for redevelopment. We established a TIF district. We've been marketing the property for twenty years. As you're aware, about ten years ago, we had a redevelopment site on the property. Plans came forward, approvals were made, market changed. So we're eager to put this property into development, and we're fortunate tonight to have a company that is willing to do so. As you recall from last year, Art Space came forward to us, and we signed a purchase and development agreement to sell this one acre of property to them for redevelopment of the site. The site, and what they're gonna be doing is a thirty-seven unit building with about twenty-five hundred square foot of commercial space within it itself. So looking at this project and some of the commission and committee reviews, we did have the planning commission review this on March fourteenth of the actions before you tonight. They did recommend unanimously to approve all actions as presented. As part of that, we did have a public hearing. No one came and spoke to the issue at the public hearing. We also had a review of this before the Park and Recreation Commission. The Park and Recreation Commission is charged with parkland dedication because this is a plot of the development. The park board looked at a couple of different items. One item we'll be reviewing tonight, and one item we'll be reviewing in the future. As far as the methodology for park dedication, they did agree with our recommendation to take cash in lieu of land, which would be about a forty thousand, seven hundred dollar payment. They also had a recommendation to reduce or grant a waiver to seventy percent of that total payment. In discussions with Art Space, we wanted to ensure that any and all waiver requests were done in a single trip to the city council, and justification for that given for any other items that may come forward. So at this time, we are not acting on the waiver request itself. We plan to bring that back in the very near future. Also, we had the Planning Committee of City Council review the project itself back on February eleventh. They reviewed the architecture of the project primarily and also some of the site attributes of it. A couple of key aspects and recommendations of the committee were followed through with revised plans, one of them being adding some more brick at the prominent corner at Second Street and Tyler Street, and varying some heights, and adding, they also added some other colorations to the building itself, which I'll point out here in just a moment. So moving into the project and the reviews that we have tonight, the first one we have is a preliminary and final plat of the property, pretty simple plat, one lot. This is what it would look like here. It consists of this lot here, Outlet C, which is essentially the parking lot that's there presently, and a little bit of this Outlet B here. So one acre of subdivision, pretty simple. Looking at the requirements of it, we're recommending approval of it. The park dedication portion of it, we're recommending cash in lieu of land. The way the resolution is stated right now is that the amount of that would be determined in the future itself. Got the perimeter easements on it, no new streets, pretty limited improvements to the property itself from a public nature. So that is the preliminary plat aspect of it. Moving forward, we have a couple of special use permits under consideration, one to the zoning code, which allows first-floor residential of the structure itself. This is something that we amended in the city code to include this property last year. In reviewing this, this property serves as a transition zone for the downtown area. The reason why we have the special use permit requirement in their first-floor residential is downtown on Second Street, maintaining the integrity of the commercial development in a strip, in a continuous pattern is highly important, and we would not want a situation which, that was broken in the middle of Main Street. That being said, this is the anchor of the east part of downtown. To have that transition happen from the corner and then transition to residential as you go east towards the railroad tracks makes sense, similarly to what we did with the Hudson Project on the west end of downtown, so we are supportive of that as well. The other special use permits we have relate to the Shoreland Ordinance itself, although the project itself is not located directly on the Mississippi River, it does fall within the Shoreland Zone. Two special use permits come into consideration on this. One would be for a multiple-family building exceeding five units. This has thirty-seven units. It's kind of a strange thing under the Shoreland Code to have this regulation there, albeit it's a template code that we were handed to us, so it certainly meets our requirements and our desires for a comprehensive plan and zoning to have a property of this density within the zone. We're supportive of it. The second one is probably more keeping with the project, and that's impervious surface. Under the strict code, there is a twenty-five percent limit on the amount of impervious surface. Now granted, if this was a new site and not a downtown site, we would strive to meet that requirement. Looking at the site right now, it's in a downtown area, there's limited impervious surface, and it was a former industrial site. Although we will be increasing the impervious surface of the site a little bit, going from seventy-two to eighty-four percent, the quality of that, the quality of the drainage will be substantially increased. We're dealing with a situation here, we've got all gravel down here, we've got a parking lot in pretty poor condition here, so the sediment runoff of that water is in poor condition. We will be improving the situation, albeit we will be increasing the impervious surface of it. So we are recommending approval of that as well. Moving on to the site plan review, the project would look something like this. This is Second Street, Tyler Street, the building would sit right on the corner, it would be three stories in height. There would be commercial on the first floor here, residential in this section, and then some community space for the facility over here. The one entrance coming in would be off of Tyler Street, coming in here with some surface parking, and then going down to some underground parking that would be within the facility itself. Go, see if I can find this. This is a picture of the building as it would sit here, you could see some of the variations in the architecture of the building itself. Vehicular access circulation's great, pedestrian access, it's on the river, within, near the parks, on the trail system, wonderful there. From the parking standpoint, the parking within the downtown area is a little bit different than how we figure it in other areas of town. Within the zoning district, property, parking requirements are provided through a study through the Urban Land Institute to take a look at what the demand would be and what the opportunities for shared parking would be. We have done a calculation of that study... Whoops, let me go back to that. There it is. Found out that we need, without the shared parking, about seventy-one spaces altogether. This is what it would generate the need for. Using the shared parking, which essentially looks at different demands throughout the day, situations in which residential demand may be lower, one portion of the day, commercial may be higher, and so the net number of spaces would change from that total amount. It reduces a little bit, about sixty-eight is the maximum that is found through that study. The property itself is showing fifty-eight spaces, so there is a deficiency of ten spaces. A variance is being requested to that itself. In reviewing the variance for it, we've taken a look at a few different items. One is, what is the impact of this site? What could we expect? In looking at other art space facilities within your packet, we looked at comparable facilities in comparable towns, towns that are not large urban areas, towns that are of about our size. The parking spaces per dwelling that Art Space typically has is about one point two. When you take a look at the ULI requirement up here, we're at one point six, so we feel that the parking demand would meet the requirements of what they've had in other places. Also, when you look at the site itself, there's only a couple feet down to bedrock within the site. In order to add additional parking, you would need to go underground to do that, or you would need to go up. Going up, you would be above the maximum height limit that we've set for this area, and going down would encounter substantial cost in bedrock removal. So based upon that, and based upon some of the other requirements or the other statements within the resolution for the variance, we are recommending approval of this. Taking a look at the situation downtown with parking, it's not unusual to have parking provided in public areas or in public lots within the downtown areas. We're in a situation here on the east side of the downtown area where we have a large parking lot across from this that's not very utilized at the moment. Granted, it's for transit purposes, but we feel that the overflow that, or the deficiency that would be created from this could certainly be handled within that parking lot itself. Looking at the architectural design of the project, we take a look at a couple of things. One, our architectural standards out of the city code, we have a variety of different classes of materials, so when you look at the project here, it does meet our requirements. This is the view we're looking at here from Second Street and Tyler Street. These areas here would be brick here, brick here, and then it would be some hardy board at this location, here, brick, 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 little hardy board. So it, there's a mixture of materials within the site, meets our requirements, a lot of windows in here. The window pattern and the pattern of the building itself, the way it's broken up, is meant to pay homage to the downtown area. The design itself is not meant to be historically accurate or historically sensitive to a period of time of development of the downtown area, but meant to kind of replicate some of the patterns in a modern interpretation. What that means in English is you've got areas of the building that are the same widths as the other areas of downtown, you have variations on the heights of the building, variations in the depth of the building, and the windows itself. These would be nine-foot windows. These would be large windows, almost floor-to-ceilings for the unit, and they match the pattern of the downtown area. The colors that they're showing here are also matching of those. The other thing that we, that's the front of the building. The back of the building, along the riverfront itself, very similar treatment as far as the breaking up of the facades, different use of materials. On this north side of the building, towards the river and towards what we hope will be future development of more residential housing in the future, you do see primarily ephes, some brick towards the back of the building itself. Actually, this is the front, isn't it? I take that back. I don't have the back of the building on this plan, but the back of the building has the, a similar, similar breaking up of the materials, just a different type of material towards the rear of the building. The other thing we look at is the Heart of Hastings Design Guidelines. This property itself is not within a historic district, however, we do have design guidelines that look at development and the patterns, what we wanna see for new development to be respective to the historic architecture. When we look at the Heart of Hastings Design Guidelines, there's different requirements or different guidance for the roof, walls, street, area, upper wall, lower wall. Go through a review of that in the report, it does meet those requirements. Landscape plan is great. One of the things that I point out is towards the back of the building, there would be a space back here for the residents of the building itself to utilize, some stairways that go down, and kind of a lawn area here. There's gonna be some garage doors overhead in this location that tenants could use as overflow space into this as well. One of the things I note, too, is towards the front of the building here, there's various porches that would come out into the Second Street right of it, probably maybe show up a little bit better here, where you have some of these stoops that come out. These stoops would encroach up to five feet in the right-of-way area. That would require a license to encroach, so one of the conditions of approval for the site plan tonight is that we need to come back here for a license to encroach agreement. This would be similar to other encroaches which were in the right-of-way that we've done in other areas of town. Also looked at the Grading Drainage and Erosion Control Plan, our city engineer has provided a cursory review of that. There's been nothing terribly significant that's come up in the initial review, however, we do have a requirement there that that review is approved prior to construction of the project itself as a condition. So based upon that, that's the end of my report here. We do have representatives from Art Space present tonight. We have Becky Carlson Sinclair, Alyssa Kelly, and David Miller. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, appreciate that. Okay, counsel, thank you, John, for that fine report. Let us take each issue separately, and we're gonna start with A. Let's talk about the resolution in regards to preliminary and final plat approval for a riverfront second addition. Counsel, to that item. Councilmember Longi makes a motion to approve. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Brox. That motion is now before the body. Discussion, is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have a resolution. Counsel, it's a special use permit request for first-floor residential in the D.C. zoning district. Since it is a special use permit request, six out of seven votes are required for this measure. Counsel, what's your wish? Councilmember Balsanik makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. That motion is now before the body. Is there any further discussion to that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have a resolution, another special use permit request in regards to the shoreline, shoreline ordinance, uh, in regards to family building exceeding five units, impervious surface. Uh, council, uh, this is before us, councilmember Vaughn makes a motion to approve, seconded by councilmember Brock's. Okay? Uh, that motion is now before the body. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have a resolution, deals with the site plan, the construction of thirty-seven live work apartment units and commercial space. Council, what's your wish? Councilmember, council, councilmember, you make a motion first. Makes a motion to approve, seconded by councilmember Alangi. That motion is before the body, councilmember Schultz.
Thank you. Um, John, um, did the HPC look at the, the parameters and the architecture of the building?
Yes, I, my, my apologies for not putting them into the, uh, the, uh, the people who have reviewed this. Yes, we did take this forward to the HPC a month or two ago, and, uh, they did recommend, recommend, but they did support the project as it, uh, as it lays out. Thank you.
Uh, your honor, um, was there any discussion about, um, sort of the, the structure of the building or the, the architectural plans? Did they have any comments or concerns?
There was some discussion on that. Uh, there was, uh, one member in particular that thought that the, the more modern look of the building may not be in character with the downtown area. Others on the commission that, uh, thought that trying to replicate a historic architecture doesn't necessarily work out well, and that if you were to replicate some of the elements of it, uh, with, within a modern, more modern architecture, that, that would be the best way to move forward.
Okay, thank you. Um, your honor, I, obviously I made the motion, I am, I am going to support this, but I am a little disappointed in the architecture. Maybe the pictures don't do it justice, and so maybe when it's, it's, uh, built, I'll be happier with it, but, um, I don't think it fits as well as it could in the downtown, in the downtown, um, area. That's just, and I have had comments to that effect from, um, other people. So, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Balsanic?
Uh, I've been getting comments practically every day, either on the street or via email or texting, and, uh, it is that there is great disappointment with the architecture of the building. Uh, I understand it's not in the historic district. I understand it was in an industrial area. Uh, but what I do understand is this is Hastings, and we always tip our hat to the history of our community. And this, to me, does not tip the hat to the history of this community. It takes me back to Architecture 101, and I'm sorry, but it does. Uh, I understand where ArtSpace is coming from, that you don't want to replicate, you don't want to this, and you don't want to do that, but I think there are times when you need to think outside the box, and no pun intended, you need to think outside of this box, because it is ugly. It is ugly, and something needs to be done. Now, you made a comment that the windows reflect what is in the downtown area. No, there are no windows in the downtown area that look like this, none. So, I don't know where you're coming from on that, with all due respect, John. Uh, but, uh, there, there could be things that could be done, curved, curved arches on the windows, uh, making them look more like they are sash windows, uh, uh, anything, something with that. In the retail area, perhaps some arches, uh, in there, uh, could be something that would make it look a little more flattering, uh, to the eye, uh, along the parapet, uh, areas. Uh, I could see something that could be architectural, that doesn't have to be historic, but would certainly break up what we've got there. Uh, I'm just terribly disappointed in this, uh, architecturally. I'm very glad that ArtSpace is here, I'm very glad to see thirty-seven units of apartments downtown. Uh, uh, I'm, I'm very glad that, uh, we're going to have some additional retail space, but, uh, you didn't think outside the box, and, and I can't vote for this. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion before us, there's still discussion, councils, are there any further discussion? I, I will just say this, uh, I'm not as harsh as, uh, some of those who don't like the, uh, the approach here. Uh, and, uh, but I do appreciate the fact that, uh, ArtSpace did take some of the comments that were made in Planning Committee about breaking the rooftops and about, uh, adding more brick, which was added on to the facility. So, I think that helps, that, uh, you know, I think it, uh, it brings it any closer to the downtown. Uh, I think the interpretation of the windows is probably open to in, individual, you know, individual opinion. I, it's one of the things I like about the building is the large, long windows, and I, I made the connection right away myself personally that, oh, well, you know, we have long windows along, it doesn't have the archways like some of them do, but it has long windows like some of the buildings in downtown display, and I immediately caught that in my, in my eye. And recognizing that is not complete, you know, is not in the downtown area, um, and, uh, and I think we have a little more wiggle room or editorial licensing when we, we put up a building of this structure. Uh, but I think, uh, once it's built, I, and, uh, once it's, uh, becomes a neighborhood and part of downtown, uh, I think, uh, I think, uh, people will come to appreciate, uh, what it stands for in that end of the, of, of East Second Street. If there's no further discussion, uh, all those in favor of the site plan, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Okay, the motion prevails. And then next we have is a resolution requesting a variance for the minimum parking requirements. Uh, this, uh, council has a variance request, would also require six votes for it to pass. Uh, is there a motion? Councilmember Balsanic makes a motion to approve, seconded by councilmember Brock's. That motion is now before the body, councilmember Alangi.
Uh, thank you, your honor. Uh, John, just want to go through the formality of making sure that you've considered the fact of car shows and other things that happen, parades and other stuff here. What's, uh, do you have a sense of, of what will happen during a car show? Where, where will the traffic that used to park?
Sure.
Right here. Um, how will they think outside the box?
Sure. I think we had some discussions a little bit, a little bit with that at Planning Committee as well. I mean, there, we'll go back to the map here, we've got the remaining block, one point three, four acre, one, one point seven-five acres there. It's gravel. Possible that we could use it, it's not something we would generally support gravel for a parking lot, but it's open, it could be used for those purposes. Uh, my next question may come up, what happens when that develops? Uh, you know, that becomes a little more difficult at that, at that standpoint. I mean, we do have the large parking lot down here, hundred spaces, whoops, where the depot is, which is open, and we have added additional spaces with the Riverfront Renaissance, which, uh, just a little bit to the west of this property here, which was formerly a gravel lot, that we've increased the, uh, you know, the yield of parking within that.
Thank you, John. And for the purposes of this project, that's a perfectly satisfactory answer. I just want to make a, make a comment to the council, which is this feels like the point in time where like ten to twenty years from now, if we don't start thinking about a parking solution in this area, uh, future councillors are going to wonder what the heck we were thinking. Um, so, uh, you know, doesn't have to be any condition, but this, let's, let's get this rolling, this is fine, this is good, this is, it's, it's a good project. I, but I, 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 I think, you know, we've done a lot of work at Riverfront Renaissance, we've done a lot of work with ArtSpace, uh, we've done a lot of work with, uh, Great Confluence Project and some other wonderful partners here. Uh, I, I just, I feel like the, the time might be coming for us to come up with some sort of structure. Um, you know, I, I've always, before ArtSpace came, my, you know, we were starting to talk about things like, do we put a, a two-level parking garage kind of up against the train tracks, since we didn't think that there'd be much else call for a development in that area, and I think they've taken the most attractive part, good for you, of, of the, of the lot, and, and, you know, which, which leaves us with, um, an even harder part, a fraction now to move. Uh, and if we are serious about using this as a transit center, if we're serious about using this as some sort of destination, um, we should be putting parking down there. Maybe we can't afford a double-deck parking structure like tomorrow, but we ought to be thinking about how we can maybe start working toward that goal, or at least put one level of paved parking spaces down there, get you, people used to the idea that that's, that's parking that we use for an area, and, and think maybe about doubling it up sometime. It would buffer noise, it would give a, give it, give it some use, and it may make the rest of the site a little bit more attractive. Down the road, food for thought, I just, I'm starting to worry.
Uh, good point, councilmember. I'm sure you're pleased that because of Riverfront Renaissance, we've increased the parking in the downtown area.
I'm thrilled.
Uh, and I think, even though it's three blocks away, uh, you know, let's recall that, uh, we've increased it ninety-nine spots. The new, um, parking facility that's going to be part of the Hudson development, uh, is going to be about total about a hundred and fifty spaces, of which ninety-nine are dedicated to the public. Uh, so that will help. And also, I think your point's well made, I think, once we look at the transit issues in the future, if we could do, do that double decking that you called for on the current spot next to the depot where the, where the parking is now, uh, uh, it'd be well warranted. But let's not put it, uh, more north of the ArtSpace building, I think that'll be too prized of, uh, of an area to put large parking structures.
I'm willing to see what develops.
Right.
No pun intended.
Okay. Councilmember Brock's?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I share councilmember Alangi's sentiments with regard to parking. I, I don't think that it's a problem now, um, but I have already heard comments, especially from business owners and people that lease spaces, um, that their tenants have a hard time finding parking, the people that work in the business have a hard time finding parking, and I've been able to have those conversations with them and make some suggestions about where else they could park. Um, but that's dependent on a lot of things, like the transit lot being empty and all these other factors. So, there, to me, I, I, I'm in agreement with councilmember Alangi. I think there's a lot of what-ifs, and so making a variance on the parking makes me nervous, not for now, but maybe ten, twenty years from now. So, I agree with that, and I think we need to keep it in mind.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Vaughn?
Hi, I have the same concerns, thank you, colleagues. And, John, if you could go to the, that picture right alone, is, I could see some cars that a business is probably parking there with, but if you can go to the site plan, um, of the actual ArtSpace, and I watched the planning commission meeting, they did catch on to this, there is no access to the parking lot to the north of that, even if we're trying to use it temporarily, as you can see, it's going to be blocked in, because currently you'd have to go through this lot to get into that north one, and I think we need to look at that sooner than later, because right now, that lot is going to be, um, excluded. You could, you have to up a curb to get in there. So, I know it's not part of this project, but we're going to have to find some way to get into that lot that we own and, okay, to use it here sooner than later. So, I think that's a concern.
E.T., so. Okay. Thank you, council, being thoughtful. Is there any, uh, further discussion? We do have a motion. Okay, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Uh, next we have comments from the audience. Are there any comments from the audience this evening? Comments from the audience? Okay? Seeing none? Announcements? Council, is there any announcements? Okay, I just have a few announcements. Did you have one, council? Okay. Uh, I do have, first of all, I think we ought to, uh, celebrate tomorrow, because, uh, tomorrow, councilmember Balsanic and Betsy, his lovely bride, who have been, who are going to celebrate their forty-fifth wedding anniversary, and so congratulations, and I don't know how Betsy did it, but she ought to be congratulated.
Come down to Mancini's tomorrow night and, and buy us a drink.
There you go. That sounds great.
We're, we're taking a limo ride down there, by the way.
Seriously, that, that's a great celebration and congratulations. Uh, council, on Monday, April eleventh, the planning commission will be meeting here at seven PM here at City Hall. On Tuesday, April twelfth, the, uh, Parks and Recreation Commission will be meeting at six PM at the Joint Maintenance Facility at nine-twenty West Tenth Street. Thursday, April fourteenth, Hedra will be meeting at six-thirty at City Hall, and our next city council meeting will be on Monday, April eighteenth at seven PM. Uh, there's no further business before the council, a motion to adjourn is in order. Councilmember Balsanic makes that motion, seconded by councilmember Schultz. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails, we are adjourned. Thank you.